convene the select board meeting and welcome the council on aging and the recreation commission to this joint meeting and ask those chairs to convene their meetings. So you just convene your meetings, bring your meeting to order.
I would like to inform the council on aging.
Just speak into the mic.
The council on aging members are called to order.
Yeah. Yes.
Okay. The council on aging members are informed that the meeting is now called to order.
Terrific.
Recreation meeting members have been informed that the meeting is now called to order.
Terrific. I'll read the governor's orders because this is a hybrid meeting. Pursuant to chapter two of the acts of 2023, this meeting will be conducted in person and via remote means in accordance with applicable law. This means that members of the public body as well as members of the public may access this meeting in person or via virtual means. In-person attendance will be at the address listed above, and it is possible that all members of the public body may attend remotely with in-person attendance consisting of members of the public. This meeting may be accessed remotely via the link provided in the agenda. When required by law or allowed by the chair, persons wishing to provide public comment or otherwise participate in the meeting may do so in person by in-person attendance or by accessing the meeting remotely as noted above. Additionally, the meeting will be broadcast live in real time via Verizon channel 28 and Charter channel 192 or via Westboro TV's online platforms at westbrowtv.org and youtube.com/westbrowtv. I'd like to thank Westboro TV for live streaming and recording tonight's meeting for all to see in the future. I invite all to join us in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Next, I'd like to outline the agenda for the community. First, the architectural contractor, Bargman, Hendry, and Archetype, as we'll reference them in the future, as BHNA will present multiple multi-generational community-centered designs and alternatives. Then I will look for questions and comments for the council on aging and rec commission, and then the select board. I ask all that when you speak, please speak into the microphone as clearly as possible so that folks remotely can hear us, as it's been a difficult problem in the past. A few comments before we get started. I would like to thank the town staff, boards, and residents for the work done so far, even though still early on, we are making tremendous progress on what is a large, complex project that requires various levels of involvement from every town department and meaningful participation from Westboro residents, which has been and will continue to be vital in our success. Now, I'd like to thank BHNA for being here tonight and the considerable work they have done so far in getting us to this point. I, like all in this room, look forward to your presentation and the subsequent concert conversation with these boards and the wider community. I remind the community that tonight's conversation is conceptual, guiding BHNA and the town to zero in on the optimal design solutions meeting service and budgetary needs. BHNA, the floor is yours. Please introduce yourself.
Thank you. My name is Joel Bargman, architect with BH plus A, and a great introduction. Thank you for framing that.
Just pull that mic.
We've had a lot of practice sessions here in the last couple of weeks, and we've tried to make it short, and every time we cut something out, there's something missing from the presentation. So it's a little longer than I might have wanted, but we're going to try to keep it to 30 minutes and be conclusive and inclusive of all the topics that have been discussed. So bear with me here. Just for the folks in the audience to introduce them to the site that we're talking about, the red circle is framing what was the Boston Sports Club and the Stein Mart store, 1500 Union Avenue. It's in part of the Bay State Common Shopping Center. It's got, as you can see, lots of parking in front of it and really three good access roads for visitors and emergency vehicles to get to the building. That particular building, looking from the access road through the Bay State Commons, on the left was the entry to the Stein Mart building, right where the cursor is, and on the right was the entry to the Boston Sports Club. What I'm going to be talking about a little bit later, as you can see, as you go down the sidewalk from the left side to the right side of the screen, the sidewalk's not level. The only place that you can enter the building flat without any barrier to those that might have physical disabilities is this first three entries points on this end, and then the tower at the other end has an accessible entry, but that happens to be three and a half feet below the level of the Stein Mart floor. So that's an important thing to keep in your mind as we look through the alternas, the site work isn't flat relative to the building. And this is the, what was the Boston Sports Club entry? It's a two-story entry that takes you to the top floor where the sports club was and where it's envisioned that the recreation department could take over that space. Just to give those in the audience who haven't been to the building, this is the ground floor space, was the Stein Mart retail establishment. It's got very high ceilings. It's about an 18-foot clear to the bottom of its acoustic ceiling, 20-foot clear to the bottom of the beam. So for multipurpose rooms and that, it's envisioned that the senior center would go on this level and have nice ceiling heights for those large rooms that serve multiple folks. And you can see it's a relatively easy space to convert. It's not built up with walls, but it has to be completely gutted, and this floor would be started over basically from scratch. You know, you're not going to reuse those old lights. They're fluorescent, out of date, not efficient. Don't need the mirrors on the columns, I don't think. The upstairs, on the other hand, is quite constructed, and it's built to be recreational space. This is the entry on the, as you face it, the left side. In the middle of the floor, there used to be areas for weights, more mirrors, and cardio equipment, and that space we call open space, that's not really, it doesn't have a lot of walls in it. The other portions of the building at that level are built out. There's a wonderful gym, two pickleball courts, almost a full basketball court, a nice pool that we can even make nicer by contouring that floor level so it's a little bit more conducive to training children, for seniors to do aqua exercises, warm water training, all sorts of things, and not at a great expense. The chair mentioned the quick timeline, and I do want to echo that. It's a pleasure to work with staff that are so helpful and have sat through this presentation for seven times before this. We started on the 27th with our first outreach, the 24th with our first outreach meeting, and you can see there had been a lot of fact-finding tours. The survey results, the paper survey, the online survey came back on the 12th of August, and I have some of those results to summarize. You can see that's 50 pages of just freelance comments to the survey that we had to go through and summarize. And we started our sustainability shirets to work on the energy components of the building, and next, right after Labor Day, the 9th and 10th of September, will be two design shirets to take off from where we hopefully end up at the end of this conversation and begin the schematic design phase and the more accurate cross estimates. Quickly, the survey results, why would we ask gender? Well, you want to know the gender and the age group, because when we look at the survey results, it's very surprising that we got this quantity of 45 to 54-year-olds. We don't usually see that, and that's really great when it's a recreation senior center, multi-generational, get that wide range of participation. You might look at the senior responses, those 50 and over, and say, well, it's only 17% of the total respondents. It's actually 350 respondents made the votes on the seniors, and the number of seniors that have been in and participated in programs today is 50% of the seniors that responded. So it's a great mix for us to understand what are the comments of seniors that are using the senior center today to inform us, and what are the comments of those that don't find the senior center adequate for their use to inform our design. So these pie charts may look like they're abstract, but they're actually very helpful to validate our findings. This is another great one. We wanted to get participation on the recreation side, not just the senior side, and you got 434 people responding saying, I don't use the senior center because I'm not of senior age. Exactly what we were searching for. But those other folks that say, why, what are the barriers to using the senior center? Programs and/or facilities are not of interest to me, they're not of interest to me because they're outdated, they're not offering the programs that you might want to see today, programs overlap each other, et cetera, et cetera. We got responses on the recreation side that almost half of the responders have participated in the recreation programs, even though there's no dedicated interior space today. So again, it just validates the information that we're getting, and the comments that we're getting back aren't just abstract and things thrown at a wall. What's the number one reason people don't participate in recreation programs today? Programs and/or facilities don't interest me. Well, the facilities aren't there really, and they go hand in hand with why certain programs really aren't available and what we could make available with this new program. The flag of answers, it's an impossible chart to understand, but I'm including it because it shows how many opportunities people had to vote for types of spaces they wanted in the building. And in true democratic fashion, we took what's 50% or more that people wanted, and that's these top eight programs: walking track, group exercise, indoor swimming. We really were trying to validate, should the pool be renovated or not? It's a very highly rated program, and you can see there's very little trail off between the votes on those first three items. What's number four? Something we hear over and over again at the public outreach, dedicated senior space. So we hear you. You'll see, there's a few things I'll come back to. Dedicated cardio was very popular. Right now, the decision has been made not to include dedicated cardio because there are YMCA's, there's a private fitness centers. We don't, the town doesn't want the community center to be in competition with private enterprises that are offering similar services. So that's one reason why you won't see dedicated cardio in the building. The second reason, it requires a whole nother level of staffing and cost for the project. If you go to the next five high, most desired programs after the 50% cut, it's also very informative. Arts and crafts. Again, it's surprising to see weight training, but again, that's a competitive, private industry program that we don't want to compete with. Technology lab. Technology labs are learning labs. Interesting that that rated so high. And then I mentioned, there's 50 pages here of 35 comments per page. Tried to summarize them here. We had someone go through all of them, and I'm not going to go through it tonight. This will be posted, and you can look at it, but it says why pluses and minuses of why people may want to see this project go ahead and not go ahead. It gave people an opportunity to comment on the project without having to respond to the questions that we asked formally. So you'll see some interesting responses there, and the full contents of the survey are available online. The program that goes into the building isn't purely based on the vote. So for example, we do have those top eight programs in the building, but you'll see that the kitchen, for example, didn't really rate that highly. But a kitchen's really part and parcel of a senior center, is part and parcel of a multipurpose room, but it's also required for the emergency management shelter that allows this building to be used as a 24-hour overnight sleeping shelter, because we have locker rooms, we have showers, we have the kitchen, with the new kitchen, they'll have a generator. It has a gym and a multipurpose room where you can have cots and spend the night if power goes out in town, if it's too cold and you don't have power in your house. So it's a huge asset that comes at virtually no cost to the program because the programs required for the emergency management shelter are built in to the community center. I mentioned the indoor pool. We really have validated the desire to have the pool through the survey and the online and in-person outreach. And just to show you a couple pictures, I went through the plans quickly the other day, and one respondent said, you really need to have some 3D images because I can't really follow the plan. So I'm going to go through a couple of ideas. In the old days, we used to take half of the multipurpose room and dedicate it to dining, congregate dining, breakfast, club meetings. It means that the staff has to go in and take those tables up, clean the tables off, move them out, get that room ready for some other program, and then set the tables back up for lunch if they're in between breakfast and lunch periods. What modern and current community centers are doing is making that lounge space a separate room so your staff can be offering programs. They're not busy setting up and tearing down rooms, and you now have a whole nother side of your multipurpose room that can be used at any time for a program. So for a small lounge space, we take out a thousand square foot that's lost in a multipurpose room when you have dining in it, and we turn that into effective programming space. So it's one way to economize and give you more for less. Old kitchens are on the left. New kitchens are what you might have for volunteers to use. They're not threatening. They have teaching counters, they have meals on wheels counters, they have meals on wheels access out the back way, so you're not going through the lobby with your food that's being taken out to the neighborhood and your meals on wheels recipients. And on the front, it's got a serving counter that serves to that lounge space. Anybody can come in and get a sandwich at lunchtime. The multipurpose room I mentioned can be like the space on the right. You have this wonderful high space that's really unique. Most senior centers are trapped in an 11- or 10-foot-high space. It gives you a nice multipurpose room, but it's more of a low ceiling. We're going to be able to do something special in this building. Another way to economize on spaces is, this looks like a wood floor, but it's actually a sprung vinyl floor. It can be used for regular tables and programs and learning events. You can move the tables off to the side and have chair yoga or light aerobics, light exercise that you might want to have in a floor. Say there's more of an older senior group that may not want to go up to the second floor. That's a key point I want to make. I said younger seniors and older seniors. When you design a school, you don't say, I just have all these students in the school. We have early education, we have kindergarten, then we have elementary, and I'm working in a town that has young elementary and then an older elementary before they get to middle school. You break up the schools depending on age group because different age groups want and need different things. And it's true in the senior population as well. The 60-year-old folks may not want the same thing than an 80-year-old person wants, but they're all included in this program, and we have to serve all of them, and they get served in different ways. So I want to keep that in mind when people say, well, why would you put a soft floor on the first floor? Well, if you're in a walker, you maybe not want to go to the second floor, but if you're a young 60-year-old and want to play basketball, it's easy to go up and use that gym on the second floor. Lot of desire for billiards, very active billiard program, lot of desire to have that billiard be closed off because it makes a lot of noise, and you can see that billiard room, they're playing cards in the back corner, but your folks said, well, we'd rather have a separate card room because the billiards are a lot of noise, and we don't want to restrict the fun that the men can have with their billiard games by having people playing cards at the same time. So we'll have those two spaces. Walking track was the number one desired item. On the second floor, we can do virtually what's on the right side. We can put a walking track around the second floor, what was the Boston Sports Club activity space. That's all an open room now, so we'll have a walking track on that second floor. And I mentioned there's to-be-built later space. This is to-be-built later space in Andover, and their kids set up ping pong tables. We have this big open space on the second floor of the gym of the recreation department. They're going to go in and learn how to use the space, learn what people want, set that up with portable, movable, non-constructed partitions, understand the best use for that, and then we can build that out over time with a more nuanced response to what folks might want in the space. And the last thing, it's not part of the senior center or the recreation center, but something that we've heard a lot about is a room like this that doesn't have a DAS in it and can be used for meetings, for voting, for dances. That bleacher system is a theater-style seating that collapses against the wall, so you have a full 2,500. In your case, we're planning 4,000-square-foot multipurpose room, but the seats don't dominate the room until you want the seats, and then you can have any type of activity from a private activity where they rent the space to town meetings, to voting, to you name it. And then we've heard the need for technology space. We've heard the chairman for working space. We met with the library, and the library said, it's not in their program, they don't have space in the building, but having a technology learning center would be a very big plus for them as well. So we hear it from recreation, we hear it from seniors, we hear it from the library. This is the kind of space that we've put in into some of our newer buildings. It has regular arts and crafts programming, but it's also fully digital, fully electronic, 3D printers. Again, it caters to all ages. It's not saying that this is exclusive of what might be a typical senior craft space, but it's something that would go in into a recreation-type program. Okay, with that, I'll quickly go on. This is a ground floor space, a Stein Mart, showing you the beauty of that space is there not a lot of walls in it. It's very economical to start construction into that space. On the other hand, the second floor, other than the 9,000 square feet in the middle that's surrounded by the red line, is fully built out and fully usable. The only thing we're really contemplating is putting a door on this room so that that can be made into an exercise room and can be made into an exercise room, and we don't necessarily have to build that on the lower level, but you can have a loud Zumba program without it overtaking with noise the entire space. Existing gym, upper right corner, existing pool, and the existing entry. Again, that little slide on the left shows you the open space. We were tasked to do three alternatives. The low cost or the low impact, what's the least amount of work you can do to get the full program in? What's maybe the next step up? And then what's the ideal program? I'm going to quickly go through these because I think it's worth seeing what the options are, but we have a little bit further development of this idea. The first scheme is the lowest-impact development that gets Westboro into the building. That would be, oddly enough, you use the existing entry for Steinmark, and you use the existing entry for Boston Sports Club. Steinmark takes you into the senior center, Boston Sports Club takes you to the rec center. In the least cost, the least intrusive alternative, those spaces do not connect. So it's not great. You'd have to leave your door and walk outside to get to the second floor. But it established what would be the least-cost alternative and the least work on the scheme. Most of the options that are developed have an L-shaped scheme of color. That's what's being built out. And it's built out on those walls because there are either windows there today, or on the lower side where there's red lines, those are windows that can be easily put into that wall because the wall's already designed with cutouts in it. Other walls on the top side aren't so easy to put windows in. The second floor, as I mentioned, can be used almost as-is without a whole lot of work. Option two said, "Okay, it's not really practical to ask everybody to go outside to use one side of the building or another level of the building." So we, we said that the second least intrusive option is to use the Boston Sports Club entry as the new re, entry to the recreation department, and then to cut through that wall that's between the entry and the senior center space. Remember that first slide I showed you of the sidewalk? The entry is three and a half feet lower than the senior center space. So I'd walk in that front door, and in front of me would be three and a half feet of stairs or ramp to mitigate, to get up to the senior center level. So it's not that difficult for some, but if you're in a walker or wheelchair, that ramp isn't great, and that ramp makes it difficult to make deliveries in that entry. It's, it's, it's a barrier there. It does happen to connect the two spaces, but it also moves, we want the multipurpose room to be near the front door so that that can easily be used at night for a meeting like this. Full TV, recording, flat floor, divisible. That really wants to be by the front door so it has easy access in and out. It's not in as nice a location as it is in the, in the other option. But the program for this is the same program that was in the other option. We just show you some build-out in the middle to get a sense of sizes of opportunities in that unbuilt space. So the white space is the unbuilt space. There, we're showing that 4,000-square-foot auditorium. In the middle scheme, we take that unbuilt space on the second floor and leave half of it as open play, but begin to put three rooms up there that are age-dedicated, that help recreation department address things that I mentioned about school-age kids. You don't want all your high school kids around all your middle school kids because there's a language difference, there's an interest difference, there's a lot of differences. So we have a teen room, and then we have the STEM room. The STEM room's really envisioned as that makerspace kind of space where middle school kids would be a, a grounding space for them, and there's a toddler room. So three distinct private age-group dedicated spaces in that. And then the more complex scheme, which is sort of obvious, in the middle of the building, it, it does exactly the same thing, same layout L, same entry coming into the senior center, but directly opposite that entry is a stair and an elevator that would take you upstairs, or if you're upstairs, it would bring you downstairs to use the multipurpose room if recreations, for example, wanted to use a multipurpose room, or if they wanted to use the kitchen or one of the program rooms that are scheduled, could be scheduled for joint use. So it's a similar program, but it makes the connection much easier. But you can imagine that connection's more expensive because we have to go up into the ceiling, cut a hole in the ceiling of the, or the floor of the senior center, the floor of the rec center, to put that stair and the elevator through. So this is, is, is the more expensive option. Same second floor as, as the last one. It's a complicated option, but when we showed that and the alternatives to a T, almost everybody says that central connection that makes ease of use between one floor and the other is central to the operation of the building, is central to having shared spaces, is really central to having the seniors take advantage of the wonderful gym and activities that can be had on the second floor that, I tell you, most senior centers don't have that access to activities. It's going to be a wonderful opportunity, and it's incumbent on the building to make that connection work, and to make it work in an area that's sort of a common area. It's the center, you can go left to the multipurpose room, but all the senior dedicated spaces are off to the bottom of this plan. It turned out to be a very nice idea. So we regathered our troops, and we had a workshop, and we've met individually with a lot of folks, we've met individually with select board members, we've reached out the last two weeks, and sort of taken the best of all those schemes. So our recommendation, that we're sort of trying to simplify the three options, is saying, "Yes, there will be a central connection off of the senior center entry that allows seniors to easily, and from the center, get up to the second floor. It'll have a separate entry for the folks going to the second floor. If the seniors want to go upstairs and use the walking track, there's the elevator that comes off of the senior center floor, there's the walking track that goes around the space on the second floor. If you want to use the gym, sorry. You want to use the gym, you get the stair, you can go right to the gym. Most importantly, you can get to that group exercise room. Zumba, all sorts of loud, noisy activities that are wonderful on this floor because they're not going to bother anybody on the first floor when the music's blaring." Very similar program. I have the point to make that the recreation, I mean, the senior center offices face the parking lot, and you'd say, "Why do you give that window to them?" Well, they're in that space all day, they really can use the natural light, but it also gives all of those staff people an eye on the parking lot, which is really a central core of our community centers and senior centers. You can see if somebody has a slip in the wintertime, you can see if someone's struggling. It's really eyes on the entry of the building, eyes on getting into the building, eyes on the program of the building. So it's a really important orientation point. You'll see on the lower left, we have future build-out. That could be two other program rooms. For this exercise, we put that as future build-out because we have the rooms upstairs to use, and what we were trying to do is find an offset of cost to put the elevator and the stair in the middle of the building. It's not a one-to-one trade-off, but paring down on these two rooms allowed us to effectively keep the budget to something we were shooting for as a starting point for the discussion of what the project might cost. So there's a, a bit of a trade-off there. It still has a 15,200-square-foot usable space for the senior center. We go through our evaluation. I've always talked about trying to be objective, have a set of rules that we're trying to meet, and do we meet those needs? So as a team, we've gone through and evaluated these schemes, and the criteria that we've established, dedicated senior space, interconnected, barrier-free, walking track, gym, pool, emergency preparedness, flexible, diverse space, and building systems that allow one room to be air-conditioned and the room next door to be cooled. So whatever group is using your space will be totally happy, and you don't have the problem of, "I need that room because that's the room that has the right air conditioning in it." And it's scalable. You can build this out over time. As you see, there's a big amount of space on both floors. I said 15,200 square feet. I took our most recent, last seven-year, 10 senior centers, community centers, plotted them out, town population, the size of the senior center. My point here is that 15,000 square feet of dedicated senior space is right in the sweet spot of what we're doing for other communities. Most of those other communities don't have a recreation department on the second floor. Some of them have a gym, like Sandwich. You'll see Sandwich, 16,000-square-foot senior center in a 27,000-square-foot building. So there's another 9,000 square feet in their, or 10,000 square feet in their building that's for recreation and gym. You have 20,000 square feet in your building for recreation and gym. Sudbury, quite a big community center, the senior center, 14,000 square feet. So my plea is to look at the use of the building and don't focus on the numerics of the project, because I think we've hit a sweet spot for projects and sizes. And I mentioned cost as being one of the criteria. We've been trying to make this as affordable as we can while giving you all the desires. So that scheme four that we presented, our cost estimator worked all last weekend and put an estimate together, and I'll give you the Cliff Notes, because one thing we're looking to do is try to understand the order of magnitude for this project. The construction cost is 11.5 million for the entire project. The total project cost is 15.5. That's because you have to do things like hire an architect, hire an engineer, hire the OPM, pay for bonding costs, pay for insurance, all sorts of other costs that go in that add about 30% to the cost of a building. Whether you're a town or a private developer, there are other project costs. But the things that are in blue are the things that are included in that base cost. So the maintenance on the building, there's $500,000 that's required of maintenance on the building. It's a 20-year-old building, it needs some work. That's included in the base estimate. Swimming pool renovations are included. The new centralized stair, the recreation and the seniors. There's some options to think about. The roof has another four to five years of life on it, and remember that first slide, it's a black roof. So yesterday, when it was 92 degrees, it was pretty darn hot in the building, and it was even hotter on the roof because that roof's just absorbing all the heat. If we put a new roof on the building when it needs it, you would put a white or a gray roof on that reflects the heat. It has a huge impact on your building. It may be that you want to replace the roof now because someone has to decide, "Do I want to have a capital expense now and fi, four or five years later go to town meeting and say, 'Well, now we have to replace the roof on the community center.'" So we want to put that in the criteria for thinking about how you might spend the money. And it's the same thing on the energy improvements on the building. You could really go to town and spend money on the building, but I want to emphasize, I showed that initial timeline, and on the end of that timeline was the green workshop, the sustainability workshop. We're now bringing in, that we have an idea of what's going into the building, the professionals that can help with what rebates are available and help to guide what might be the most cost-effective system. So while you may think, "Oh, that would be an electric system," it doesn't probably make sense to go all-electric on the second floor where we're not doing any work, and it's a gas system. Maybe there's a hybrid that uses heat pumps and a hybrid gas system on that second floor because that's what the whole 32,000 square feet is built out as. And it would be probably not cost-effective to spend four or five million dollars to take out a working system and replace it. Whereas on the first floor, that's a different picture. That's Steinmark, that's a retail store. Now we're putting in a lot of people, community rooms, that might be a different space. So I think that four to five million, that's going to come down considerably. We already know that we can upgrade the second floor at a very minimal cost to the town and achieve ever greater energy efficiency. So what I'm getting at is the costs that I'm showing here haven't brought in rebates yet, but we don't want to promise something that we can't deliver, so that's a whole study that's going on, and we want to present the sort of case, neutral case for the project. Sorry to go on so long. The larger schemes, that full build-out, where I put the multipurpose room in, the auditorium space, the voting space, the full build-out of the open space on the second floor, that gets to be a $20 million construction cost, in 24 to 25 million. So before you go gasp, when we build a new building, well, you bought the building for 8.8 million. The 64,000 square feet of space, it's about $130 a square foot of space. What would it cost you to build that today? You're not going to build it for $130 a square foot. When we build new community centers, the all-in cost is averaging about $975 per square foot. We're about half that. That number looks like a big number, but it's really a really wise number. It makes sense that the town acquired this building to renovate it because you're going to get virtually a very inexpensive recreation department, a pretty easy renovation on the senior center because we don't have to put a new floor slab in, we don't have foundations, we don't have roofs. We have to repair the roof, but we don't have to buy the structure. So that number's a big number, but it's half what it would cost if we were doing this project from scratch. And what's next? Additional outreach. I mentioned the ninth and the 10th are workshops, charrettes, however you want to term it. One is at the senior center, one's at large, where we're really going to look for feedback on these ideas that are in the current scheme or developed scheme. We want to finalize this preferred master plan in the Phase 1 scope. We want to update the cost estimate. We have to do all that by the end of the month of September. We want to bring this to the select board for decision of scope and schedule, and then hopefully bring it to town meeting whenever the town decides to do that. So thank you, I appreciate it, and sorry that it took so long.
Thank you very much. Just a quick programming note before we open it up. I forgot to mention that this is a, that we're looking for public input here as well. So after the three committees and boards go through their questions and comments, we're going to open it up to the community to ask questions and make comments as well. And when we get close to that time, I'll look for a show of hands as to how many people would like to make comments so I can get a feel for like the timing of allotments that are going to be required for each, each person to have, you know, an equal amount of time. So with that said, I'll just open it up to the Council on Aging and the Recreation Committee to ask any questions or make any comments.
I honestly didn't have any questions. I thought the presentation was really good.
Just speak right up-
Oh, sorry. I honestly didn't have any questions. Either one of you have questions? I thought the presentation was, was very good.
Okay. Anything, anybody from the Council on Aging?
Patrick, if I may, I did not see a dedicated library area in any of the three.
A dedicated library area?
Library.
Okay. Please direct your comments, I think, to the architect.
We have bookshelves that will be shown in the next scheme, but we, we didn't have a dedicated room for the library. The idea would be to put books to activate the common areas. That's a great point, that, that's the kind of thing that if brought up at the charrette, we can begin to accommodate that in the building. It isn't something that came out of the survey. I know that I've heard that a little bit at the meeting that we had at the senior center, but we, we don't have a separate dedicated library room. It could easily be added. We did add in a separate music room, and that's the kind of space that could- We did add in a separate music room, and that's the kind of space that could be shared as multiple functions.
We do have a fair share of people who like to come in and sit in the little parlor area, read a book, a magazine, whatever. So there would need to be adequate couches and chairs for people to do these types of things.
Yeah, I didn't explain that well. Thank you. If you have a chance to go to the Wellesley Senior Center, there's a really nice entry lobby with tables and people are sitting there reading, playing cards. It's a very nice idea that you're seeing. We sort of brought that idea into here. So right off of the entry, there's a sort of lobby lounge area where you can sit at a table, sit in a chair, and again, those are the comments that if we need more of that kind of casual space. In Situate, we have a little quiet room. It's got four seats, separate little room, it's 100 square foot, so things like that are easy to put in.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
I can't see, is there a STEM, you know, computer room for the first floor?
The idea would be one of the program rooms would be converted into a technology room. So where we had the arts and crafts off to the right, we were thinking arts and crafts, and next to that would be the technology room, sort of put those together. Arts and crafts for a senior center is very different than arts and crafts on the second floor, but that's where they would go if they were put in. That's something to discuss--
I'm sorry, I'm not following you. Those two rooms are an alternate to the program one and two, or?
Future.
Or for the future? So the initial--
That white space, that future build-out would be able to accommodate those two rooms, and that would be the dedicated technology. You could also make program room one and two, one of those a technology room. I'll say that most of our technology rooms are program rooms with big closets, and most of the technology is on carts and comes out when you need to use it, and then it goes back in when it's not used. So we don't really have rooms that you go in and have desks set up with technology on a permanent basis. But this is why a plan is good, because when you talk about a project abstractly, it's not nearly as good as seeing the thing on the plan and being able to react to it. And this isn't painted in stone. This is where we're at on the 29th of August. We're still working and we're, need to hear from you, these ideas. Thank you. Yes, sir.
There are three options. How will they be handled? Are they going to be first decided by the select persons, or will they be decided by town meeting?
I think that what's happened is that we have a fourth option that consolidates the best features of Option One, Two, and Three. We didn't take all the things in the most expensive option, but that interconnected stair that was in Option Three, once people saw that and how it worked on the two floors, it became an integral, essential component. So this, we're now in, moving into schematic design phase, and in schematic design, you take the information that you learn from the three alternatives and you create what's called the preferred alternative. And it's not necessarily One, Two, or Three, but it's the best of each one of those that you discover.
Are these plans available at Town Hall to inspect?
I would, this, we put this presentation together that could be posted online, and there's some additional slides in there that explain the schemes that I have hidden tonight, but they could, they'll be opened for when it goes online.
But Joel, that's also, and just correct me if I'm wrong, the charrette also creates like a working meeting where you can provide very specific, I mean, you should provide comment now, but the charrette is really a working meeting where you're responding and giving various more detailed, I guess, comments to the plans.
How do you do that?
Well, we're going to do two. We're going to do one here with the public at large, and then we're going to do one in the afternoon on the 10th at the senior center. We'll have a plan on the table, depending on how many people show up, maybe several tables, there may be several architects, and we'll walk through some exercises for you to understand the relationships and what's in there and get feedback. And that feedback can be posted notes, it can be marking up the drawing, but people can actively work on the drawings, understand the spaces. We'll have some pictures of what the spaces look like by then, and that's sort of working around a table, discussion, we take the notes, and then we incorporate those ideas back into the plans.
After that's done, will there be another presentation like this?
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
When we went as a group to see some of the senior centers and tour them, one of the things that we were really very interested in was the Northborough Center that had the kitchen and cafe or lunch, I don't know, you know, where they actually prepare and sell lunch and serve, et cetera. It looks like from this plan that that's a potential, the way it's set up. I just wanted to make sure that that may be an option.
Yeah, no, they're really popular. Another one, if you have a chance, is to visit Marshfield. They, that's really getting a great reputation for their cafe.
Okay. So that looks like that it could use the multipurpose room and--
Exactly, yeah.
Okay. Just wanted to make sure that I understood that. Thanks.
Yes, sir.
The elevator, as it has an accompanying staircase, I guess, for emergency purposes or what's, why do you need the extra staircase?
Well, because not everybody's going to want to use the elevator.
So the stairs, that's in the back corner there, that's a totally emergency access--
That, this stair in the back corner is a fire stair. It's not a very pleasant stair. This is a sort of stair that makes a direct connection. So if Jenna wants to run down to the senior center, she can hop on the stair and not wait for the elevator. If I want to go use the gym and I don't want to, personally, I don't like to use the elevator because it's using energy and it's not green, so I'd take the stairs. Right? Other people have different ideas, but it makes it more connected.
So being that you're going to, like you said, have to cut a hole, will that staircase also allow for some natural light to come down from, sort of like a skylight effect?
It could, sure.
But that, how big is that hole going to be, I guess I'm trying to figure out?
That hole is 15 by 20.
Just the size of the stairwell, basically, or a little bit bigger?
Well, it's that dark orange rectangle.
Oh, it is, that whole area?
It's that whole area, yeah.
I like that.
I mean, there's a lot of ways to do that, and some people may say, don't do that big of a hole. So you can never win on that argument, you know? We'll have to hear how people respond to that.
May I speak again? Are we going to be assured that when the seniors want to use the second floor, there will be no children up there? We need to protect our seniors. And I, you know, like the walking path upstairs, well, will there be dedicated times for the seniors to use this area versus time for youth to use it?
I'll let the staff respond to that.
I think a lot of it, I mean, you know, Jenna and I have talked a little bit about it, some of it's just required scheduling. Like if somebody needs to use a conference room for a meeting, it's a matter of scheduling. We've talked about having, you know, dedicated senior time for the pool. So it's scheduled, so it could be like, you know, Tuesday and Thursday mornings from nine to 11 or something. So it's just a matter of, once we get in there, scheduling the things that are necessary to accommodate both the kids and the seniors. So that's, that's like somewhere down the road.
Thank you. That sounds fine.
And hopefully, a little more than nine months a year, the kids are in school during the day, which would mean there really wouldn't be children on the second floor of the building during the school day, during school hours.
Although-- Yeah, there might be infant and toddler, but the way this space is designed on the second floor, they could certainly have activities going on. Joel, could you go to the second floor, just so, you know, you could have them using, you know, there could be kid swim lessons going on, infant in the pool, and the track is open for seniors, you know, whatever, you know, or adults, right?
We have this--
I think that almost spot-on, that it's going to be a matter, scheduling is going to be a process, and we're going to learn, and we're going to make some mistakes, and then we're going to tweak it, and then it's going to, it will go through different iterations.
Again, one more question about that space. I like the idea of being able to--
Guido, just speak right into the microphone.
Sorry. I love the idea of getting natural light down onto that first floor area. I was at an assisted living facility recently, they've got a four-story circular staircase that goes up all four stories, and the light that, it's a beautiful skylight that comes down there. But what I'm just thinking of, though, is what about noise? I mean, one of the things that was talked about when this building was first purchased with all the basketball, you could hear them downstairs. And whatever insulation, if you've got that big hole in the, in the floor there, that's, how's that going to work?
Yeah, that's a good, great point. The other noise issue that the plan has to mitigate is the basketball in the gym that we're looking with our acoustical consultants. The way the plan was developed for long-term was surrounding that stair where the, those three rooms that were teen, toddler, and STEM. So you would sort of have a buffer to the stair from the noisy areas of the recreation department, but it's a good, it's a great point that we need to think about. So thank you for raising that. Some of my community centers, the grandparents bring the kids to the rec center and then they go to the senior center. So the fact that the kids are overlapping is sometimes, can be desirable.
Any other questions or comments? I'll open it up to the Select Board then.
Oh, yeah. Thank you. Can you show the, yeah, you got the first floor there. So can you walk through, I think, for, can you walk through for everybody sort of the back end of the space there where it's access to the mezzanine and sort of what that entails?
Thank you. I completely forgot about that. The backside of the building was the loading dock for Steinmark, and it's some advantages to that space. There's a storage mezzanine in the backside of the building. It has a lower ceiling height. So what we're, could very easily build into that space, something that we heard about at the last stakeholders' meeting, which was an area for the veterans' office or a conference or another office space, and a shared lounge where the veterans could come in. They could come in the back door, there'd be a shared lounge, and then dedicated private offices that are confidential. We have a lot of veterans' offices in senior and community centers, but they're not usually integrated completely in the senior center because you have soldiers from Afghanistan or the Iraq wars that are younger soldiers than that that don't really want to participate in coming in the senior center front door to get to their space. So it's also, some of them may have issues that they want the confidentiality about. So even when, like Situate has veterans built in, but there's a separate entry that's discreet from everything else that they can come in. So being in the backside of the building, I completely forgot to explain this. You have confidentiality, you have relatively low cost, and you have their own entry coming in. That entry brings you to the open space. This future build-out is anticipated to be left as the Steinmark ceiling lights and some sort of flooring on it. That can be a voting area until such time, if you want it to be, until such time that that floor gets built out in a more organized manner. Again, the back entry, if you do turn this into a voting station, voters can park in the back and they're not taking recreation or senior center parking spaces on the front of the building. So now you can have 200, 300 people come in, vote in the morning on their way to work, and they're not bothering anything else in the building. Come in, come out. Then there's a community lockers, which is a space for, like the Boy Scouts need some storage, inevitably be some private vendors that use the space that are part of the programming. There'll be community lockers for those different programs. There are restrooms that are there, wonderful asset. Restrooms are expensive. They serve that future build-out area. So if you have a vote going on, you have restrooms available for the voters. So that whole backside is community space, and that's what we have articulated at the top, 4,100 square feet of build-out community space. Thank you.
Sure. No, thank you. And I think to follow on Mr. Leonardo's question from earlier, so on the basketball, sort of under the basketball court and under, on the second floor and under, the exercise room, my understanding is you can, I guess, hear that activity on the first floor, I guess. Does this include some way to add some sort of noise, can it's under those floors?
That'll have to be done, yeah.
Okay. So that is incorporated in--
That will be incorporated in the schemes. It's in the budget as a contingency now. We're not 100% sure how we'll do that, but--
Got it, got it. Thank you very much. And I think I'm looking forward to coming back on the night. Thank you.
So thank you for this. Having been part of some of the discussions leading up to this point, it's good to see the feedback being so aggressively integrated into what's now, where we are with the go, you know, this Option Four we're looking at, which is really the state of all the feedback in the design, which will lead us to the charrette and more feedback and more fine-tuning. I don't have any particular questions. I would like to, you know, point out some things that when we look at an intergenerational community center, it's recreation, it's senior center. The dedicated space for the senior center is nearly doubling the current space that's available today, which will definitely allow for expanded programming plus the shared use of recreation facilities on the second floor on top of that. But this still leaves and includes the ability to integrate other members of the community. So the importance of having the veterans' office here, the feedback from the Veterans' Advisory Board, was that it can eliminate some of the isolation that veterans might feel from the rest of the community. Even though there's a separate private entrance and there's a private space, it's still connected to the rest of the space and the rest of the community. And that the fact that there is future build-out space where we don't have to invest right now and we can wait and see what type of use we may want for that space in the future to continue to serve the evolving needs of the community over time. So I hope people share my excitement about where we are today and also being able to do what's planned at a cost that's still significantly lower than the Option Three because certainly everyone I know who looked at the three options said, well, Option Three is the best, we want that. And then you show the price tag and they're like, well, maybe not. And so this, I think, incorporates the best aspects of that third option with the center entrance that creates that connectivity and provides the increased programming space and the flexibility, but without top lining the budget. So, thank you.
So thank you to everyone. A couple of questions and before comments. So the sustainability charrettes, who is attending those? And are those public meetings?
We were talking about having a public meeting that focused on the green initiatives. Right now, their working sessions have our engineers, so it's a mechanical engineer, an electrical engineer, and a fire protection engineer were present. Then from the town, the facilities manager and the sustainability director--
Coordinator.
Coordinator were present. So we were bringing in that group. That was yesterday. Then today, reintegrated into that group, energy source, a mechanical contractor, the same group of engineers and town staff, and some grant facility people to begin to hone in on now we know what we want to, we know what we want to present. We know what spaces can be used. You know, knowing that you don't have to build out this 8,000 square feet in the middle makes a difference on how they think about it. So it wasn't a public meeting, but we could certainly have public meetings.
Yeah, I would, I think that there's strong interest in the community in understanding the green initiatives. We've put a lot of effort, certainly volunteers have put a lot of effort between, behind the Sustainable Westboro Committee. We've made a commitment to staffing the coordinator position. So I think at some point, a dedicated conversation that maybe starts to, you know, maybe the appropriate time is we start to look at the options that are part of kind of the preferred design. I think that that's going to be an interesting conversation for many. So, so I would just, that's food for thought.
Can I, I just, I do want to say, so we did have, in addition to our sustainability coordinator being part of the stakeholder meeting, we also had Sustainable Westboro as part. And so one of the things that did come up is that there are incentives that might have timelines attached that make it sort of more urgent to get in the queue. So they're just sort of wanting to give a full picture of their involvement at this point.
Yeah, no, I appreciate that. And I think it's important that they are involved. I also think that, I'm just being, just being candid, not everyone sort of is aligned with those initiatives. So I think having a very public discussion about pros and cons and relative upfront costs, long-term gain is, is important, that those are public presentations and well-advertised. If we were to look at the slide that is program favorability versus necessity, that was sort of, I don't have a slide, maybe it's slide 12. So first of all, I mean, I, I love, I love what we've done here. So I think that we're getting very close to a preferred design that does, that achieves what the survey says and articulates. I do, I would like to understand, and I've been party to some of these conversations very early on. I find it interesting that dedicated cardio equipment space and dedicated weight training space ranks very high percentage-wise, and yet a decision has already been made to rule those out for non-compete and staffing purposes. I would imagine insurance is part of that, too, I think you mentioned. I think it's important that the, there's some specificity around that decision that the public understands because it's clearly an ask here. I will be honest, I don't share the non-compete philosophy. I think that there's a way to achieve maybe some of that. Maybe it's not, this is, you know, Gold's Gym or whatever. I don't think that that's the intent, but I'm not there on that decision, and I would like to understand how that decision was made.
You want me to answer?
Anyone that can answer it. I mean, I know that, I know that those were early conversations, and I've been just, I've been kind of vocal about my, my view on it, and, but I didn't think a decision had been made. And I'm just one person, so I want to be clear.
Yeah, so I think, I think the results here are the, are the result of a couple of things. One is that we were talking about a Boston Sports Club, and a lot of folks use the building as a Boston Sports Club. That this was not the result of an open-ended question. It was sort of a checkbox, like what are the things that you want to see? So sort of, this was not what we heard in the public engagement sessions. It'll be interesting to see if we hear it more in the charrette. But it does, the level of equipment, we do, I guess I should back up. We did actually retain some low-impact equipment, I guess I would say, from the transition from Boston Sports Club. So there is an interest, I think, in both the senior center space and the recreation space to have exercise programming. But we have not heard, I don't think, besides from the survey, that people want us to purchase the equipment and put it in, and dedicate a room to that type of space. It does also require, in addition to insurance, it does also require staff who can help people use that equipment. So if you've ever gone to a gym, there are people who teach you how to use that equipment. And, and given some of the discussions we've had around, you know, staffing, it just didn't seem like a high priority. And also the fact that we hadn't seen folks ask for that in the public engagement sessions. But I think, again, that that's something that would be interesting if we were hearing that at the charrettes or here.
Yeah.
If I can comment on that. Most of what I've heard with respect to dedicated weight training space from members of the community is that the weight room facilities at the high school are sufficient to support the in-season athletes, but not accommodate out-of-season student athletes and other students who wanted to work out. The high school used to have public hours for the weight room. That's no longer the case because of the demand. So I know there was some, there is some desire in the community to have additional space. Where we are right now in the design, for me, it's, we have 8,000 square feet that can be built out in the future. There's some things that could be, in the future, could easily be moved around on the second floor to create some of that space if it turns out in need, but that, the schools could also look to see how they might better accommodate the need of the students within the facilities they have. So I hear your point, and just a little, my, what I've heard is might be different from what you've heard in the community as far as--
Yeah, I'll be--
Interesting. So it'll be interesting in the charrette.
Yeah, I think the charrette would be important. I don't want to overlook kind of the check the box, what we're seeing here, because that's the hard data, as opposed to sort of anecdotal, and although I haven't read the 50 pages, so I, I think that there's, if, I wasn't thinking about it actually from even a youth lens. I was thinking about it from core and strength and balance for folks like myself and older. And I, I think that, I mean, you can do a lot without having, you know, massive traditional weight gym machines, right? So there, there's a lot that can be done with weight training, that's resistance training, so on and so forth. So, you know, I, I think that that's, I'm not suggesting that we have sort of a university style, you know, fitness center. That's not it at all. I don't think our adults would want that. But I do think it's unrealistic to think if we wanted to bring in a trainer from the outside and people wanted to participate, they're not going to bring that equipment in. So, I mean, it's just not going to happen, bringing all their weights and everything else.
So as Christie had mentioned, we did retain, I think, up to 30 pounds, free weights, mats, kettlebells, resistance bands. And when we were discussing this, it was exactly to your point of I could easily hire a fitness instructor that could do teen workout classes, adult, senior, and beyond. And it would be a great selling point to say, hey, we have everything you need all right here. We just needed to come teach the class. So that was in mind. And then I think, you know, while it's not a treadmill, if we were to incorporate this walking track, there's a cardio aspect there. Yes, mainly, probably 90% of the time would be walking, but I don't see why you couldn't at certain times of the day, when appropriate, you could run on it as well. So I think that, as Christie also mentioned, people, because when Boston Sports Club closed, we did get a lot of calls, where am I going to work out? Where's the gym? Where's this? So people may have been looking at it through that lens of like, this used to be a place where I worked out, and I want to go back and do that. And I think we'll be able to offer some aspects of that, like group fitness and exercise. And again, with the walking track, that would be a cardio aspect.
So, thank you. I think, I think what I'm hearing is further information, further public input is needed, if that's important, and the type of programming around that. So, and, and that with appreciation for, we want people to be safe, but I also know that there are a lot of people that have their workouts, and they could do that without instruction and oversight.
So I think that the, the key word, excuse me, and word in both of those highlighted in yellow is dedicated space. Those two words, sorry.
Yep.
And so, you know, when you're looking at the recre, the second floor or even the first floor, are we willing to give up any of those spaces to have a dedicated space for just cardio equipment or just weight training? And so I think when we're hearing that people want to do fitness, you know, maybe, you know, to your point, Shelby, maybe it's even just an open time for, I don't know, Jen can come up with it better than I can. But we're hearing that we want to support fitness. It's just, do we really want to dedicate any of these spaces to these equipment?
Yeah, I think that's a great point, and I kind of overlooked the word dedicated. I sort of went to more the, the programming aspect of it. So I, I think that, again, let's see what the charrette yields. So thank you for that dialogue. I think Judge asked a question. I'm not sure we fully answered it in terms of the decision, I heard it as a twofold question, decision process for design, which we did answer, which is around having those charrettes. But, but we didn't quite go there, like who's making the final decision on the design. And then I think the second part of the question was, who makes this decision on the funding? I know that, I know the last part, but I think we need to have a clear conversation about who gets the final yay. So I--
Yeah. So, so ultimately, the select board has been guiding this process. It's, but it's, it's everyone's input that would inform the, I don't want to say the final, it would, the schematic design on which we would base the funding request. And I think that's really important to understand that nuance, because once, because this is just schematic design. And even though a ton of work has gone into it, it's really just the beginning. Getting into 100% design, our typical process is to work through a building committee. We're doing that with the library project. We've done that previously with school building projects. So we would expect that the building committee, in collaboration with these folks in front of you, so the select board, the council on aging, and the rec commission, would create that final design. And, and only that final design, or, I'm sorry, when we create the funding request, that's what would go to town meeting. So I think, to your question earlier, you know, is town meeting sort of voting on which one they like? We would just bring the one, and we would ask for the funds that would support that one preferred design.
Right. So lots of input to get to that point, to ultimately bring forward one design that hopefully has broad community support across certainly these boards and committees and beyond, and then ultimately the funding at town meeting. Okay?
And then just your funding question. So, you know, we will work together with the board to identify funding. You might remember that we talked about potential available sources of, of funds that is separate from, or that would pay down potential debt. So we'll have, you'll see, as we move forward and we sort of get closer to these numbers, we'll, we'll have more presentations about what available funds we might have that could fund a portion of this.
Okay. I saw on the alternative design, I mean, the preferred design, I guess we're calling it, the, that back mezzanine portion, you mentioned community lockers. There's been lots of conversation in the community about what that means. Could, could you clarify, I guess, kind of the, what's being presented here and how that would be designed, or how that would be used?
That would be a policy for the select board, likely, because we, well, it would be a policy, I guess. I'm not really sure how, how we would determine it, but we would have to create a policy because we know that no matter how many lockers we have, and how much storage space we have, we will always need more. And so we will, we will need to identify, you know, what might be available to a community group versus, as Joel mentioned, maybe a vendor that comes in and provides exercise classes that might have equipment that they need to store there. So I don't know that we are, have the detail of how many or what size they are, but the idea is to provide some level of storage space for folks who are using the building but are not the recreation department or the senior center.
I'd say the number one thing we heard in all the meetings was storage.
Yes. Yeah, no--
Of one kind or another.
Right. We heard that a lot. I just, I, I think it's important that it's been identified as a potential, as part of the use, but I want to be very clear that the policy hasn't been developed. This is very much at a high level, and so its use and all, just because it's on there doesn't mean it's A) going to happen, and B) in that particular case, and B) that it's been defined who's getting that space. So, okay.
May I ask a follow-up question? The presenter, when he was making a presentation, indicated that, and I'm not sure where it fell in the presentation, that if there was a need to build out, you could build out to accommodate a need. Would that mean expanding the building?
No.
Or building inside?
Within the building, there's additional space.
Thank you. And another one for the select persons, if I may. I'm fully in favor of this, and I'm going to support it as much as I can, but I like to know the alternatives also. So if this does not pass at town meeting, what is then the next step?
I'm going to let that simmer for a bit. No.
I--
Well, I'll just say one thing quickly. Right now, there are plans for the recreation department to move into the second floor next month. So this building is, is opening this fall.
Yes.
Yes. So, you know, if, if the plan gets voted down, then we come up with a different plan, but that doesn't mean we don't use the building. Now, the first floor, I mean, you know, the first floor is going to sit vacant until we come up with the correct plan for that, but we are going to be into the building and using it as soon as possible. So, looking forward to that. Get over there, start using it, and let those ideas just swirl around in your head and bring them back to us. Thank you.
And I would just further, maybe try to answer that question around, if, if, I think what you're asking is if we go to town meeting with a proposed solution, and town meeting votes it down, what's the next step? I'm envisioning that that would be somewhat similar to what happened with the library, where depending on the comments made at town meeting, we get a sense of what the town would like us to do. In that case, the town said, we'd like you to go back to the drawing board and come up with something more economical. Maybe that's the case, and maybe that would happen. But these are all hypotheticals, right? This is the starting point. We're trying to create a best option to bring to the town for first, and hopefully that'll go through. And if that doesn't, then we would, we would look for, you know, that feedback from the community.
Thank you.
So just two more quick comments. One is, I, I think that we've done a great job so far getting to where we are. So I want to be very clear about that. The respondent survey of almost 1,100 people, I think, is great. I think it is so, so important, so I'm looking to our town manager and her staff of, and council on aging, rec department. The communication at this point is almost more important than where we're at today. And for folks to understand how important those charrette sessions are to get us to that next part, and the importance of attending and participating. And if you can't attend, but you've listened to this, to do whatever, like whether it's send an email to the town manager, send an email to, to our senior center director, I think we need to be very clear, very clear about how feedback can be submitted if we can't attend those sessions. Because there are people that will say, I didn't even know this was happening. You know, they're just getting back from vacation on the Cape, or the summer on the Cape, or whatever it is, and, and they, they're, this is just not top of mind. So I cannot stress enough the importance of like seven times communication of everything we're doing to get the word out. So, because I'm, I'm still hearing lots of questions around, like what happens next? Along the same line-- Along the same lines of that, there are, and Joel, I think you put that up as, as one of the comments, the, one of the 30, 50 pages of comments around the need for kind of collaboration with other projects going on. We've got a library renovation, we've got a golf club building. I'm not saying, so I think it's important that we, as a, as a body here, and those, the library trustees, and the municipal building committee, I think we need to have a conversation about how these projects are different, and where there may be sameness, because there are a lot of differences, but in the mind's eye of a taxpayer, it's like, we're doing lots of all these big projects that are sort of nice to haves, do we really need to do them? And we need to have conversations around that, so that the public can understand how they're the same and how they're different. So, I don't know what form that takes, but I do think it's important that, and, and the library trustees are not here tonight, so hopefully some of them are watching, but hopefully in our library director is hearing, like, that conversation needs to take place, and it needs to be a public one. The same is true of getting, understanding, kind of bringing the municipal building committee into that conversation around kind of what are the plans for the golf clubs, so, because people are going to say, well, that's just recreation, and we're going to do this. There are different, there are different plans there, but we've got to bring those, we have a responsibility, I'm looking to our board, looking to leaders in this town, of, of bringing those conversations together.
Can I just say, I know that you're saying that, that there's a, you're asking for a public conversation, and I, and I don't disagree with you, I just want to be very clear that in development of these plans, there has been review of the plans that are currently in front of the municipal building committee, related to the golf club building, and there have, has been, have been meetings between both the library architects and our, the community center architects, to, to identify if, if there were areas of overlap, and, and where we might need to shift. So, I agree with you, but I think it's really important that folks know that even to get here, we had those conversations, and will continue to.
Yeah. So, because many of us literally, that I know you do every day, right? I know that, maybe other people here know that, because you're here, but I can tell you that there are many people out there, and maybe they're just all on Facebook, I don't know, but they don't, that message is not getting through. So, I trust that, I know the process, but if we, just, if we want this to pass, we've got to do a better job in communicating that. So, again, not, not trying to lecture here, I just cannot emphasize it enough. Thank you.
Yeah, so I did have a couple of questions for you, Joel. I don't know if you can switch slides, I'd like to get to the second floor of the option So, my question here is, and I realize that that kind of, that central space is, I'll say, up for grabs, for lack of a better word, it's yet to be decided. One of my concerns is, and, you know, I love the, the track idea, you know, we talked about that in our one-on-one session, is to better utilize that window space, you know, visualizing people walking and looking out the windows as they're able to go around and enjoy the beautiful scenery of our community. But my concern is, or my question is, is around that stairwell elevator space, being in the center of that, and how people would access what is likely going to be a fire access, when it's in the midst of a, 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 a walking space. How does that work? How would that operate? Now, I'm not sure if more thought needs to be put into its location, meaning the stairwell and the elevator, or if you have other design, you know, ideas of how that could flow to get people in and out of that area appropriately. So, just a, a thought conceptually for you. The other question I had for you, or point I was going to make, was around the first floor space. Back to the locker rooms for a moment, 355 square feet, as we just heard, there's a lot of demand for space, yet we haven't determined what the policies for that space would be, and what the process would be for that space. But understanding the groups that have come to the town and asked for space, 355 square feet is probably about twice the size of that room right there, it's not that large. And I'm just curious as to how that would work. I would also be curious as to how that would work in considering that it's off to the side, meaning if somebody's in the multipurpose room, they might have to come all the way through the senior center to bring whatever it is they need out of that community locker. Does that need to be more centralized? And along that same vein, I would also talk a little bit about the kitchen being more centralized. When I see the veterans' offices in the back, I'm thinking of those veterans wanting to get a cup of coffee and go to a meeting in the veterans' office, and they've literally got to walk through the entire, either around the building, or through the whole senior center area, through a community lobby, back up to that area. So, conceptually, I guess I'm looking for that kitchen space to be more centrally located between, I'll call it the three or four vital functions of that first floor, being multipurpose, senior, veterans type of area. I love the idea of the lounge and the cafe, I like the idea that it's out in front with the windows. I love the idea of the office suite for the senior center being facing forward, I hadn't even thought about the parking lot, and being able to see folks coming into the building. I think that's a, a great idea. So, a couple of other comments that I heard from the community over the last couple of weeks?
Can I mention one thing on the coffee?
Yep.
There's an existing room in the back that has a kitchen with a counter, so we would make that the veterans' coffee area, because the kitchen's very nice being attached to the multipurpose room, obviously, so, I, I didn't mention that they, that's their sort of space in the back.
Thank you for pointing that out. And I think you had mentioned to me, one of the reasons why you all had put the kitchen up there was because to allow that receiving access as well, for goods and materials to come into the kitchen space.
That's correct. With that coming through the lobby, yeah.
That makes sense to me. And, okay, that, that helps a lot, to have that existing room. So, a couple of other points that I heard from the community over the last couple of weeks is a desire to have a quiet room, or a desensitation room, for parents who might have children who have issues that need to be in a quiet space, while they may have other children that are actively participating in activities. Another request was to have a nursing room, space for mothers that need that, that privacy. And, oh, and then one comment that came to me actually today, as I was down at the food pantry from a senior, was, and I've heard this loud and clear from the senior community, is the dedicated space, but above and beyond that, having that space somewhat cordoned off, health concerns, they don't want children running downstairs, coming into that area due to health issues perhaps. So, I, I get, I don't want to, I'm trying to avoid getting into the little, the smaller details here, but I would just say that as you design it, I think that there needs to be an ability to close off doors in that reception area, whatever, whatnot, so that, so that children, or I'll say people that really have no business in that space, aren't easily going into that space.
Okay.
Okay? And that was my, be back. Thank you again.
Oh, can I, sure. You just reminded me, when you mentioned the quiet rooms, so in the kitchen, the design, again, I know it's just some pictures, but the designs show, it looks like primarily sort of like count, counter or bar height, I'm not sure what the right term is.
That's the, that's the kitchen idea in another center, where you have a counter height in the middle, like you have in a house, but it can be set up for cooking, but it's a, also a teaching station.
Sure.
So, the whole idea is the kitchen becomes a program space.
Sure. I, I would love to see something, so, some people, that might be a great height to sit at, particularly as you get older, but for those who may be in wheelchairs, or not be able to be at that, I think we need to have multi-height areas, and maybe it's not there, but it's, you know.
At the end, it steps down.
It does? Okay, okay.
You can't see it.
Okay.
But you're, it's a good point.
Yep.
All right, this time I'll just ask, uh, Seela, is there anybody online? How many?
We have four remote.
Four people. And do we have any word on Ian's arrival? Is he planning?
Not able to make it.
He won't be here at all?
It's all, yeah, not.
Okay. So, can I get a show of hands as to who in the community would like to make public comment or ask questions? One, two, three, four. All right, terrific. So, what we'll do is five, okay. So, we'll, yeah, we'll have you come to this microphone, and we'll alternate, I think what we'll do is we'll alternate between online and in-room. Okay?
I've asked folks to use the raised hand.
So, I'll just ask you, sir, to, in the microphone, speak closely to the microphone, your name and your address.
My name is Bob Kristen. I live at 16 Piccadilly Way here in Westboro. And I'd like to go over a couple of these slides with the group here. The one that had the, where they showed the percentages of what people wanted versus necessities, I just want to make sure I fully understand that first. So, could we go to that slide first? I noticed that there are a few items that have a strike line through them, one of which is, I think I saw a movie room.
Yeah.
That's one, 40% of people thought that would be a favorable thing to have. I know at the senior center right now, which we enjoy, there is a room that we do watch movies at, I mean, these could be Netflix, or whatever that's brought in, and we're able to watch movies there. I wanted to know, since I see a strike line through that, would this proposal for the senior space be able to have a room that we could continue to watch movies, that we presently do right now?
Yes. The, this was sort of, maybe we misunderstood or misrepresented it, we were thinking this was the, like, the home theater kind of space. Every room that's a program room will have audiovisual built into it with hearing assist and lighting control, so that you can show a movie, or a distant learning activity, or any type of other audiovisual activity could be shown in those program rooms, and the multipurpose room.
Okay. And the other ones that have strike lines through it, we're not going to consider that for this community center, like an infant toddler preschool space, and some of the other ones that have a strike line, that's not going to be part of this community center? Is that correct?
That was the, maybe this chart wasn't the best chart in the world, but that was the idea, is that we didn't really have a separate preschool room in the program, and the other point is there are certain rooms that you do need to have in the program, even though they maybe didn't rise to the top of the, the heat, because they're just, they're required, like the, the kitchen didn't receive 50% of the vote, well, you need a kitchen, so, and, and for the emergency shelter, you need that. So, I was trying to sort of bring rationale to the objectiveness of the survey, and, and being responsive to the survey comments.
Okay. Can we go to the slide that's, the one that shows the seniors, actually the first floor, where we indicate the space that's going to be dedicated for the senior center, which is on the top? If I'm reading it correctly, I think it reads, is it 15,200 square feet? Is that?
That's correct.
That's correct. What is the current square footage of the existing senior center right now?
8,655 square feet.
Okay. Now, when I look, and, when I look at this slide here, it says, the colored area is the dedicated senior center space, plus related nurse and veteran space. And I noticed that there's an alternate program space plan for arts and crafts, and low-impact exercise on the lower right-hand section. Would that, is that part of the 15,200 square feet that we're talking about?
That's not included in the 15,200. That would be in addition to that.
That would be in addition. So, that would, if we would, to, that would be in addition to that, so it would be going into one of the future build-out areas that's available?
It would go into that lower one, where it says 2,000 square feet, future build-out.
Okay.
And one of the issues is there are no windows there, so we'd have to put those windows in, and that's one of the-
All right.
-cost factors, but that, that's a decision the town has to make, to include that or not include it.
Okay. One of the things that we really enjoy at the senior center, and we just had this the other evening, during the summertime, they have dinner nights on Tuesday evenings, where they have entertainment coming in. And the last one we had, which was excellent, actually we had someone performing as Elvis, we probably had over 100 people there, Alma, how many people were there?
115.
115 people. So, we were using the main room for that, and the person was able to entertain us as we were actually having a meal that night. Would that be able to be handled in this multipurpose room?
Yes.
It would be?
And, and more, it's a, a larger room.
Okay. And so, we'd be able to bring in chairs and all that, which I guess would be in storage somewhere, to, and tables to accommodate, like we had the other evening there, where we had tables sitting to watch the entertainment while we ate?
Yes, sir.
Okay. I'm a little concerned about the lounge café, café, 600 square feet. Currently, you know, we do have a kitchen in the existing senior center, and they do serve meals from time to time there. I'm concerned that, that lounge café area, is that sufficient size for meals for our people that, when they come there, if they want to have one of the Meals on Wheels, plus other people that go there, like the veterans, I think they have a meal there once, once a month and all that. If that's going to be a lounge café, is that sufficient size for that?
Let me show the picture of that.
No, because I believe those activities would go into the multipurpose room.
Right.
The lounge café is a permanent area that's-
Right.
An entryway relaxation area for a planned program meal, you would set up the multipurpose room, which also connects directly to the kitchen for food service. So, it'd be similar to what happens in the current senior center, where the kitchen is connected, you have the largest space available for those types of functions.
Okay.
The other thing I'll comment is that for the charrette, what our team's doing now is putting furniture in every one of these rooms, so you can really see how many seats are in the main room, and how many seats are in that lounge, and we can fine-tune that size for you at the charrettes.
Sir, let me just, I'll just say, if you can ask, if, one more question, just to allow other people to also have some time here, so.
Excuse me? What'd you say?
Just have you, ask one more question if you'd like, where, I just want to have enough time for everybody in the community.
Oh, okay. I mean, I'm, I think, if we just go back to that last slide, I think I've covered all my questions that I had. Yeah, yeah, one other one, I wasn't quite sure exactly where this elevator is on this floor, as it, as it moves up to the, is it right there? As it moves up to the second floor?
The idea is it's right, sort of easy to get to on both levels, so it's right here on the pivot corner.
Okay. All right, and I guess the other thing is the programs one and programs two, that will be defined by the senior center as to how they would use that space?
That's correct.
Okay. All right, well, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Seela. Is anyone online?
No one's raised their hand to request, yet.
Okay. Anyone else? Sure.
Betty Kristen, 16, Piccadilly Way in Westboro. I have a follow-up question about the multipurpose room, 2,600 square feet. Can you tell me, how does that compare in size to currently what the big room is at the senior center, Alma?
I think Joel can answer that, I don't-
I don't have the exact, I, I believe the existing room is 1,800 square feet, but I, I will check that and we'll-
Yeah, that sounds-
Verify that.
You think that's 1,800 square feet, what we currently have? Okay. And then my other question-
The requirement was to house 200 people in that room approximately, which is what that size to do.
The occupancy, you said, is 200?
Yes.
For that proposed room? Okay. And the other question I have is, I noticed you have a gift shop. I didn't see gift shop listed as something that people needed or wanted, was a necessity. I'm wondering how a gift shop got there, and why we even have a gift shop, whether we're now in the retail business also.
Alma, that's fine.
Oh gee, thanks. The hard question. I think, I think if you go to a lot of, I know that if you go to a lot of the senior centers, that they have a shop that's run by the supporters, or the friends, or whatever the organization is, and it, basically, I know the one in Northborough, they have cards and, I don't know, seasonal, different kinds of seasonal things. The one in Framingham and Ashland, they have, they each have one. It's sort of a eclectic mix of things that they, and it's open limited times during the day, or maybe it's only open on Tuesdays and Fridays, or whatever, and it, it just supplies a little bit of source of income for the group that supports the, the centers with additional funding that the town doesn't include. that the town doesn't include in our budget. And that would be what it would be for. Like, a lot of the things maybe that were left from the fair or, you know, I know they put stuff out for other activities after the fair, like some of the knit and crochet things and some of the crafts, and it would be a lot of that kind of stuff. But it's, it's a very small space there, so. But I know that there are, like I said, Northborough's got one, Ashland's got one, Framingham's got one, I believe Natick has one. That's what it would be used for.
Thank you. Those were all my questions. Thank you.
Thank you. Bill?
Bill Linane, Walker Meadow. First of all, I want to say you've done an excellent job in summarizing and give us, giving us a good example of what's been collected today. And your, your firm is excellent and a tribute to those, Select Board, Christie, for selecting you and being able to do that. But I think the more, the important slide that I liked, and Christie talked about, and Shelby, is the, the getting us together, asked later on, what do we call the charrette? And I think it's important for other people to be involved in it. It was a little confusing whether you said it was going to be certain boards, but I think the people need to be there. And as long as you do that, that's fine. A follow-up, you said, there's two things. One, I think some of the audience watching TV tonight couldn't hear some of it. So, make sure that when Westboro TV puts it out, that we get out there. Getting the public in, as Shelby talked about and you've referred to, maybe send notices to the different clubs and organizations to reiterate what, where we are at this point, and there's still time to get people in. And as far as the people getting in, all of us here in Westboro that have lived here are looking to the future, and I think you have taken what we said today. We're also looking at what these juniors, the seniors and the rest in the next phase. We don't know exactly what it is, but you've looked at it, I think, enough to open our eyes. And the final comment is that if you haven't been involved, get involved. And, and don't sit by afterwards and say you didn't know where. It's out there, find it. And it's a tribute to the people that have been involved so far to bring it to this point. Thank you.
Thank you, Bill. Sure. Mr. Allen?
My name is Peter Allen, 8 Edward Dodway. I agree with Bill Linane that, I have no quarrels with this fourth version. I, I think it's wonderful, and I don't have any comments really on the details, but I guess as I'm getting older, I'm less reluctant to look forward and anticipate the difficult vote to get the millions that will be required to do the build-out. And I can imagine that there will be people voting at the town meeting who will hope that the, obviously, if we build out the lower floor here, we will not need the current senior center any longer. And they would perhaps like to see a commitment from the town that the first option to help with the funding will be selling the existing building. And I haven't heard any conversations, obviously, there are a number of things that could be done. But I will anticipate that it could be a close vote without the commitment to seek to fund this by selling the existing building. There may be people who will say, I won't vote for this because it may be turned into other things that will not help my tax rate as much as selling the building will. So, I think the idea of not having any conversations or any publicity as to what the thoughts are for the existing building could be a problem, and when you're a town government, you don't get many bites of the apple. They seem to come every six months or so. And I'd hate to see a delay as a result of something where, again, you wouldn't commit to sell the building, because what happens if you don't get a good bid? But the fact that there will be a, a plan to put it on the market, and if we get a reasonable bid, we'll accept it, that could influence enough votes to make this go. And I just wanted to put that out there.
Thank you. Anyone else? Sir, come on up, sir.
Doug Wales, 8 Lennox Way. Are these slides available, so we can go over them? Are they on the, where are, where are they available?
They'll be available tomorrow on the website. And then we can also print them for folks who would like them in paper. Yep.
The other thing, just a comment. Looking at the survey, it looked like the survey went up to age 55 or so. Typically, 55-year-olds are still working, getting ready for retirement. There's a, there's a larger, there's a good-sized number of residents of Westboro who are another 20 or 30 years older. And it would be worthwhile getting input from these folks at some of the over 55 residences in Westboro, Orchard Hill, Walker Meadow, and so on.
We had that, that input. That survey went up to 80-plus.
One way of doing that, I think, is to...
Yeah, so it is actually included in it. It was just that there was a smaller respondent from that population, so it was lower down in the slide. So, I don't know if you want to, if you can show that, Joel? So, we, the survey included everybody in the community, and you'll just see here, hopefully, Ms. Silliet.
But while he's pulling that up, I think that, to that point, that's why we have had dedicated senior meetings. So, we have a dedic, we had a dedicated meeting at the senior center for public input, and we'll actually have a dedicated charrette on September 10th at the senior center as well. And, and with the question about going out to different locations in town, we're working to coordinate that right, right now. So, we won't get to all of them, but a couple of them.
Good. Thank you. And thank you for your work so far.
Thank you.
Sure. Shelby?
I think it's been asked a couple times about, you know, will the slides be available, et cetera? Website is awesome. It's a great way to be able to see things. I know Westboro TV has taped all of the sessions. That's another great way to see the information. I, I think it would be helpful if there was a way, and I don't know how this works from a budget perspective, based on what agreement we're already under with Joel and his crew, to have a place where people could come in and look at some big pictures and kind of look at it, and then submit, like, questions or have someone there to answer questions, like, like a walk-up, not just at the charrette, but some, you know, an open, some sort of open time. I, I think that it would be helpful if we could do that. And if, and if that's not within, to have the professional services team be there, some staff members at periods of time. I just think that not everyone is comfortable with locating the presentation, et cetera. So, I think we need to think about that.
Well, I think what you just described is, is really what the charrette is, which is people to come and give that direct feedback. I think at this point, because this encompasses four different versions, that, sort of having those larger pictures available, which I remember that we did that when we renovated these buildings, when we got to closer to one design. So, I think that that might be post-charrette.
Yep. Thank you.
Anyone else? Let me just make sure nobody else has, hasn't spoken yet. Anybody online, Sheila?
No one's requested.
All right, sure.
Again, my name is Bob Kristen. I reside at 16 Piccadilly Way here in Westboro. When we were voting as a community on this multi-generational community center, at that time, as part of the town meeting, we were shown a slide as to what the potential cost would be for a build-out of this facility. And during the presentation tonight, I saw a slide as to projected costs for one of the three options that we were looking at. So, my question is, how does that, how does the options, how does the cost now, let's say the option that seems to be the most favorable one, which is like $25 million, how does that compare to the original presentation that was made at the town meeting where we said we had a build-out of X amount of dollars, and there was other monies available that could be used to offset some of the costs to refurbish the community center?
We did not ever put forward an estimate of what the build-out would be. Every time that was asked of us, multiple times, and every time we were asked, we said it would, it would be deter, the cost of that would be determined by the public input session. So, so we did not put forward an estimated cost of build-out. We did identify available funds that could potentially be used to, to pay for whatever that cost ended up being.
Right.
So, some of those things are, we have the sale of real estate accounts, which can be used for anything for which we would borrow. There's $1.8 million in that account. We have, we call it the Pulte money, but it's, it's money that we receive from Pulte related to their project at the state hospital. That, that total amount still remaining, we haven't collected all of it, but that total's about $7 million, so we're working to identify how much of that could be used. I think it's really important to, to put out there some of the items related to the emergency shelter. There are grants potentially available, so our fire chief, as the emergency management director, is working to identify those as well. And then, and then to what Mr. Allen said earlier, we did identify the sale of the senior center as a, as a future funding source. We, we did not identify how much that would be. I, I think we maybe brought up the assessed value, but I, I don't have that off the top of my head.
Okay. So, I mean, so we still have those options available to offset some of the costs of this build-out?
Yep.
I just mentioned, you, you mentioned the number 25 million. That, that's everything built out in the most ideal manner. The scheme that's proposed is 11.5 construction and 15 all-in. So, it's, I just want to make sure that it's not 25 million that's the proposed option here.
Okay. Thank you.
And Christie, I just want to, for the sake of his question, Shelby just shared with me a slide that was presented at town meeting where it gave estimated new construction cost examples. It talked about the Upton Community Center, which was 15,000 square feet at $12.4 million, or $826 per square foot. We just heard 975, I think it was, yeah, $975 per square foot. And then the Sudbury Community Center, which is 42,575 square feet at $32 million, at $752 per square foot.
Yeah.
Those are just giving you...
But that, that slide was not intended to estimate the build-out.
Exactly.
It was to show the value.
Just to show what the cost of these things could be for that vote. Right. Just so if you, I wanted to make sure you were aware of that. And Christie, I, Shelby distracted me for a moment there. Your answer, did it also, it was, is CPA also an option for funding as part of this as well?
I don't believe so. Maybe on a very small scale, but I think our CPC is still working to get that program up. So, I don't think that that's a...
And then I heard you say 1.8 million in the current fund for sale of real estate? That's not including the potential of selling the current senior center?
Correct.
Okay. All right. Good question. Thank you. Anyone else? All good. Nothing online? No? All right, well, if there's nothing else, I think I'll look for motions to adjourn.
Slow move. Second.
Second. Select Board vote? All in favor? I don't know if you, you all? Oh, that's true. We gotta do roll call. But it's supposed to be hybrid. We have to do a roll call.
GIO, yes.
Edinburgh, yes.
Welch, yes.
Marshall, yes, I said.
All right. You all have to... Do a roll call vote.
Nancy Vala. Yes.
Yes.
You have to say your name, say your name and yes. Guido Leonardo, yes.
Daryl Simononi, yes.
Bob Watchburn, yes.
Beth Travis, yes.
Brian Kane, yes.
Katie Welch, yes.
Terrific. Thank you again to Westboro TV. Everyone have a great rest of your night. Thank you very much.